Okay, call this meeting to water. Today is the December 5th meeting of the planning board. We'll get right into the agenda. First order of business is to review and approve the minutes of November 2nd, October 5th, and July 6th.
Can we do October 5th and July 6th? Because I gotta recuse myself for November 2nd.
What are we doing, October 5th and July 6th?
You can do them as.
Yeah.
No, that's all right. I got, is that what you said?
Yeah.
Okay, okay, so.
I'll make a motion to adopt the minutes of October 5th and July 6th.
Second.
Second.
Any comments? Okay, then all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. And do you have a motion on accepting the November 2nd minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Any comments, questions?
I'm just recusing myself. It wasn't there.
Okay, there being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted, so we have four in the affirmative and one abstentional. Okay, next order of business is board member comments. Anybody have any comments this evening?
We have, we have bills too.
Yeah, we're not there yet. Oh, did I skip it again?
Yep. You're rushing us.
Yes. So excited that it was up here. I thought we'd get out early.
Tell those, for those people.
I'm sorry. Well, while we're on board member comments.
No comments.
No comments.
Okay. Okay, we have one bill from Graves Engineering for 36 Sewell Street project for $318 for peer review.
I move that we authorize the expenditure as read by the chair.
Second.
Okay, we have motion second. Any further discussion? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so voted. Staff report.
Mr. McGorick. I'm sorry, I'm just realizing I didn't upload the comment letter that we had. It just was yesterday that we sent it into the town manager's office that our, by week it was due. But we've been working on kind of a number of projects. Pull that up quickly because we do have a couple important dates to note. So we did, we've been working with Lakeway Business District for their bid outreach meeting as well as our online MBTA community outreach meetings, a little bit more one-on-one for those. So thank you to those that attended those, as well as the zoning board of appeals and additional Lakeway Business District Association meetings and community preservation committee meetings. So we've been busy with a lot of kind of night meetings the last couple of weeks. Task that we've been conducting is drafting 40B technical assistance application to Mass Housing Partnership in relation to some projects that have been filed. So we'll be sending that out and seeking technical assistance to provide some, some support in those areas. We've also done preliminary reviews of some of the Route 20 proposals for Mast dot. They're at 25% design, so still very early in that, but reviewing that with staff. We'll be having comments to Mast dot shortly. Working on our budget and capital requests, which will be presented for town meeting, as well as a number of plan reviews and drafting some of the zoning amendments, which we'll speak to tonight. We do have a community outreach meeting for a project scheduled for December 19th. So that's for the GFI project, Worcester Sand and Gravel, as well as Affordable Housing Trust on the 14th. So we'll be working through that. We're continuing to work with the Jordan Pond Trail Consultant, kind of reviewing the survey and working on the final design, bringing that to the next stage of design for those and additional community outreach related to that. So those are the, kind of the high points of what we've been working on, and we're happy to speak to any of those items or continue on. I'll forward this memo off to the board as well.
Questions, comments?
No questions.
One question. Pretty sure Mast dot's aware that if the Pulte thing goes through, we're going to be able to make that connection.
Yeah, so that's part of the proposal that they would deed a portion of land for the connection between Green Street and South Street. So we'll coordinate that with Mast dot. I know engineering's working with them. They're aware that that's on the table.
Yep.
And so I just, one other thing is I'm looking, I failed to mention, we were awarded $27,000 a grant from MEMA for our hazard mitigation plan update. So we'll be coordinating with staff on moving that project forward.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, the next order of business is a public hearing for a special permit for a proposed common driveway at 36 Sewell Street. Capstone Realty Trust is making the application. Would you like to read the advertisement?
The one I have here is for, is not for Capstone, it's Route 20 nominee.
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
That's pretty good.
Yep, that one's Capstone.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, the Shrewsbury Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Thursday evening, November 2nd, 2023, at 7:00 PM in the selectman's hearing room at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Ave, to hear the application of Capstone Realty Trust, 69 Park Ave, Worcester, Mass. O and 605, as required by the Town of Shrewsbury zoning bylaw, section 7L, for a special permit by the planning board to allow for the construction of a common driveway to serve three new lots. The proposed development is shown on plans entitled Site Plan of Land at Seawell Street in Shrewsbury, Mass. on eight sheets dated May 15th, 2023, revised on August 31st, 2023, prepared by Asmeath Land Design, 118 Turnpike Road, Southborough, Mass., stamped by James Tatro, P.E. The subject property is easterly of Seawell Street and consists in whole or in part of Shrewsbury Assessor's Tax Plate, 8 Lot 011000. Copy of the application plans and reports may be seen in the Office of Planning and Economic Development at the Richard D. Carney Municipal Office Building, 100 Maple Ave, Shrewsbury, Mass., and on the planning board website.
Thank you. Okay, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. James Tatro from Asmeath Land Design, here representing Capstone Realty Trust. And property in question for which we are requesting a special permit for a common driveway is located on the easterly side of Sewell Street, just north of the intersection with Gulf Street, which is about where I'm holding the scale right now. That's where Gulf is. And the total site is including a lot that's not part of this, is 5.3 acres. The three lots, numbers two, three, and four, are proposed to gain their access from a common driveway that crosses a wetland in order to minimize the total wetland alteration on site. This single alteration would still alter just over 500 square feet. We've been in front of the Conservation Commission. Things are not, they haven't issued an order yet, but I don't believe there's any question about the delineation of the wetland. What you see on this plan, outlined in blue, are property boundaries of each of the lots. The dark green areas are wetlands. This is actually sort of a, really a pond area that extends mostly into Boyleston. And this pond has an outlet through behind this house here at number one Sewell Street for a 12-inch pipe. And this area here that's wetland is the flow southerly from the discharge end of that pipe. Again, there's another wetland area here that's running towards another sort of ponding area on a, on a part of his property. So the, the site is presently wooded, has a few different wetland areas, and the intention of the common driveway is just to limit our alteration of wetlands. Proposing to enter onto Sewell Street at a location with excellent site distance, I believe it's 600 feet in one direction and 700 feet, you see beyond the intersection with Gulf Street, looking to the south. The driveway would be 18 feet wide with curbs on the, on the side of it in the common driveway portion. It's within a 30-foot wide easement, and the easement is 264 feet long. The drive, again, you would, driveway would cross this wetland. One driveway would peel off to the south to lot two. You'd go almost to the end of the proposed easement, and driveway lot four would peel off to the north. Driveway for lot three would just continue on to that house. That's the one furthest proposed from the road. The culvert that's over this is to be just big enough to not alter any of the sometimes wetland channel. In order to achieve, there's a U.S. Army Corps of Engineers requirement that, to make the number simple, if this was 20 feet from site, it's actually 22 feet, but if it was 20 feet from site to side, you need to have .8 times that distance or 16 square feet of open area of your culvert. So again, what's conveying water here to here is just a single 12-inch pipe, and we're going to have actually many multiples of that cross-section in the culvert we're going to create. The grade of this is, is just 1% down here. The steepest it is, is 3% in this stretch at the beginning. So I think in every respect, compared to the requirements in zoning bylaw for characteristics of a common driveway, we're meeting or exceeding them. And again, I think it's a reasonable choice in this case. It minimizes our alteration. One other quick point, the three lots are, number two is a 47,000 square foot lot with normal frontage. Numbers three and four are rear lots. This is the rural B zoning district, which requires 20,000 square feet. Both of these have more than 60,000 square feet, and they, so they are allowed to have reduced frontage. And we submitted, as the ad said, we had submitted plans of a certain date. We naturally had revised plans. I might get the date wrong. Is it, is it October 11th?
10, I think it was, yeah.
Okay. That were, first, we had a set of comments in the, to back, just to step back one step further, I should apologize, I should have apologized at the beginning for how long this was perhaps, you saw this on your agenda, but nothing was sort of happening. One instance of that was my fault. I was given the information about when to, to place the legal ad, and I delayed past the time when we could get it in, in time. Then subsequently, we placed the legal ad, and through a extremely rare mix-up, the community advocate didn't run the ad. And so we were, we had multiple instances of pushing this back, at least one of which was my fault and for which I apologize. But in the interim, we were able to, we had a set of review comments from Graves Engineering on behalf of the board. We sent a revised set of plans, again dated in, in, to October, responding to those. And I believe we have a clean review now from Graves, attesting that there are no issues that they see as outstanding. So I'll, I will, and I just, I guess one more point I would just note, we already did the soil testing on site, and we actually already filed and received approval of the septic system plans. The site is fantastic. Super coarse sand and extremely gravelly soil. And so, you know, each of these houses is going to send roof runoff to a dry well. The area is just marked in blue. And this common driveway portion of the driveway goes down from elevation 438.2 at the road to 437.2, just short of 100 feet in, and then rises up from there. And so this is a local low point. This is going to be a, a, you can get a stormwater filter unit with a catch basin top. That's what this is going to be. And that will discharge to an infiltration structure immediately north of the driveway in that sand that is going to eat up the flow even in the 100-year storm. This is, again, fantastic, super permeable soil. But I just wanted to note that we already have also even that other part of the process completed because we, we're not anticipating that I would forget to put the ad and paper in time, and then other things would ensue. So we had already done that. But I'll, I'll try and take any questions that you have and.
Sure.
Sure. I'm just curious, how far the town wells are from the project?
Oh, ah, it's a great question.
Because when you said the, so permeable soil, I mean, would that have a negative impact of the digging and all that?
Well, one of the things we actually, actually, this goes hand in glove, because this area does not have town water service, these all have their own individual wells. Even if they didn't, if it was in the contributing area, you would be, you would have the same requirement, which is that for each bedroom of, in the house, for each, in other words, reach 110 gallons of, of flow to your septic system, you had to have 10,000 square feet of area. So we are proposing all these to be four-bedroom homes. This lot has 47,000 square feet. This lot has 69,000 square feet. This lot has 61,000 square feet.
I was just curious during construction if there be any, I mean, I assume you're going to take all sorts of, you know, prevent measures.
Yeah. Well, again, I, I would just point out that the, the normal preventative measure in, when you're in the contributing area is, is a sort of a density limit, which we're actually already achieving by simple fact that when you have your own well, for instance, in this case, well here and septic system on the same lot, you are now officially a nitrogen sent, that lot is a nitrogen-sensitive zone, which actually has to meet the same density limiting requirements as if we were closer to the well.
Okay.
Anyone else?
I have. So you, you, you're going to have three individual private wells on that lot, I would assume, right?
Correct. The well for lot four is to be in front of the house here. The well for lot three is to be, I'm in front of the house here. The well for lot two is to be south of the house over here. Each of them meeting the normal 100 foot from leach and trench status.
And the septic systems are also three individual separate septic systems, right? Not a combined one?
Correct. They're, they're, these three separate systems have been, were submitted to the board of health and, and approved.
I don't recall where I read this, but either they were, town is, was going to extend a water line or sewer line to this area, right? Sewell Street?
I, I don't know.
Ah, maybe, I, maybe, I'm not sure.
Have to look back this.
Yeah.
Sewell Street continues quite a ways down south, too, so it, it's not, this is, no, isn't that, and, and just off, offhand, you know, this is the town line right here. So we're, this property is really at the very limit of Shrewsbury. So you probably would have been the last, if any, to get such service extension.
Yeah. Okay, thanks.
Okay, any other question?
I'm all set.
I'm all set. Graves, I think, picked out everything. Do you have anything, Mr. McGorick?
No, so I, I mean, I do just note that conservation is still open. It's, you know, we typically hold until conservation closes, which I.
They, they were saying the exact same thing.
Okay.
That they didn't want to, they didn't want to close till the, the planning board.
Blended.
Okay. I, I would, I would beg you to, please, someone put their gavel down first, please.
Yeah, I'll kind of defer to the board on that. But, you know, I could certainly communicate it to conservation if, if we wanted to hold it, but.
We can close, but just that there's going to be.
Right, the decision.
Condition in the special permit saying that, you know, that.
Contingent upon.
It's subject to an order of conditions that.
Sure.
I think that's fine.
We, we, the applicant would have no objection.
You mentioned something about fire department, wanted to make sure that.
Yes, so, thank you. So I did look back at the comments that are in the permit system. So as mentioned, it's been open for a while. So the fire department was asking about the design of the culvert and the ability to accommodate a fire truck, and they, they did respond, and, and that is, that step is signed off. So their, the fire department has indicated they're fine with it.
Okay.
Okay. So we have no outstanding issues except for what we decided to do with Concom?
Right, yeah. I mean, there's, there's some minor comments that are, you know, in terms from engineering and building, but I think those are more related towards process moving forward. So I would just kind of point to those, just so the applicant's aware to having those addressed. But I don't, I don't see anything that we need to answer for now. So I'd, I'd be comfortable closing the hearing if the board sees fit.
Okay.
We don't have a decision yet, right?
Right, no, we don't have a decision written yet, but we would have to also do the, open to the public comments.
So by the time we get a decision, James.
I think if it's not controversial and the audience doesn't have any objections, we should just go.
Quiet bunch tonight.
I, I move that we close the public hearing on the special permit for the Capstone Realty Trust, 36 Sewell Street, the three-lot common driveway.
Second.
Motion second. I just will note that there is nobody in the audience. So we would have a, open for the public comment, but there aren't any in the public here, so.
And I don't wish to speak against myself.
Yeah. Okay, no further discussion. Everybody in favor?
Closing hearing.
Of closing hearing. Say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. So voted and.
Get a decision next month.
Yep.
Just leave it at that for now?
Yeah.
Okay.
I thank you folks for your time.
Thank you.
Okay.
And I, again, apologize for having contributed to this.
Don't worry about it.
Lingering on your agenda so long.
Not a problem. Not a problem.
Okay. Our next order of business is a proposed self-storage facility on Route 20, 170 Hartford Turnpike, but the applicant has asked us to continue, but we still need to read the legal notice, right?
No, not until it's open, so we can just continue without opening it.
Okay.
Okay.
I gotta recuse myself on that one, but you guys should probably vote on it.
To continue.
Yeah.
Right.
I'll make a motion to continue the proposed self-storage facility application for the Route 20 nominee trust at 170 Hartford Turnpike.
Second.
On a certain date?
Two, yeah, to January 4th at 7:00.
To January 4th at 7:00.
Second.
Okay, motion second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, so voted. And you are singing for that vote?
Yep.
Okay, next order of business is to discuss the senior housing regulations that we talked about, I think in August, one of the last, last meetings.
Yeah, September, October, one of the two.
Anyway, since then, Mr. McGorick, myself, Ms. O'Neil, have been working to put a draft together for the board to review and ask questions, make comments, suggest changes. So you want to, you want to take us through it, and then we can ask questions?
Yeah, so I know this was forwarded to the board, you know, just this week, and it's, there's a lot there. It's definitely a dense kind of article. So I did kind of pull out, I think, some of the, the five most kind of pressing questions, I, I think in my mind, in terms of this, for review with the, the board tonight. And I think that'll help me to, you know, with your kind of comments tonight, be able to clean some of those up and have a cleaner draft for review at the January meeting. So one of the main points, you know, we were originally looking at this as the, you know, a senior housing overlay and reviewing obviously the, the use table. There's also the planned residential community. For, you know, expediency sake, really, the planned residential community is similar to senior housing development, simply without the over 55 requirement. But just looking at that kind of more dense kind of planned development with a, you know, seeking to preserve open space by creating that density. So, you know, that was kind of my first question to the board, is, is that something that we want to include in this provision, you know, as we update the use table? Do we want to, you know, refer to this more as the, the senior housing and planned residential community overlay, or do we want to exclude that, keep it separate as it is, and just look at senior housing at this point?
Comments, questions? Your thinking, Steve?
I, I, I think we should just limit it to senior housing. Because I, you know, I know that, you know, our senior housing bylaws kind of confuse me that there's, you know, the reference in paragraph eight about compliance with the subdivision rules and regs, and this just kind of spells it out. You know, again, we can do it, you know, reading it, I wonder whether there is an undeveloped parcel of land that could fit this. Yeah, but.
Oh, five acres?
No, meaning like, there's, there's some stuff in here, it's like, oh, okay. You're gonna keep, wetlands don't count for the 30%. You know, so it's, roadways, grass plots, density, you know, I, I question whether there is a parcel of land in town that will work for this, but that's okay. Let's do it and.
Well, I think the thing, what does everybody think? This is really to get this thing out there.
Yeah.
We looked, and, and Mr. McGorick did some investigation on his own. We tried to take the best out of a few other.
Right.
Things.
Yeah.
And I think the, just the open space thing, yeah, it, it's a lot more restrictive than the others, but I think we were thinking about what we got for open space a lot of times in those projects.
Oh, yeah.
A lot of it was wet, which is.
Right.
Which is good because you can protect it, but it's also not much use to the.
No question.
To the community, so. If you think it should be.
No, I, I think it's a place to start. Maybe we say, you know, that some of these may be waived in the board's discretion as part of the special permit. Because there might be a project that we like, but for some reason, it just doesn't.
Yep.
Check all the boxes.
There is something somewhere about, about the open space, and the board's able to be flexible. I don't think it was specifically to that, but it was all about open space, right?
Yeah, so there's the, the base open space provisions. We did build in some flexibility, both for the, the board to kind of waive some provisions. There's also flexibility for, you know, the applicant to pursue some density bonuses by whether it's preserving additional open space. And that was actually one of my other aspects to talk about, you know, the, the density bonuses that we identified were, that we may want to consider is the, you know, pushing for rentals if they're over, if they use over 25% designated as affordable, we may want to provide additional density incentives there. Obviously, the, for rentals that are over 25%, that gives a, a greater benefit to our subsidized housing inventory. And then looking at the condo, you know, ownership of, you know, pushing for deeper affordability through that to give the density bonus that if they pursue, you know, the 50% AMI, and, you know, we can talk about those specifics later down the road, but looking at deeper affordability for the condo, since you won't get any SHI bonus, I think is the, the avenue to, to pursue there. It did have some provisions for onsite and offsite open space, so, you know, presumably if someone dedicated a, a portion of land that's privately held as open space, they could get a density bonus on this site. Or I think there was some provision in trails that, you know, I know we had talked about. I'm not sure exactly how that would work out in a way that we would see meaningful. So those were some of the ones that we had included in there. So those were some of the ones that we had included in there, so.
Do we know if, you know, we're talking about affordability, do we know if the DHCD is, what, what their position is on the age restricted units?
Thank you, that's a, a great point, so that, that was, I was looking at it from the lens, if we included the planned residential community, we would be able to add those to the SHI. If it's over fifty-five, none of these would be eligible for SHI, because they're age restricted.
The project can be age restricted.
Right.
Right.
We don't get credit for the affordable units.
Yeah.
And I know the developers come in and they say, there is no market for, we can't find buyers for these. Because most of these people, they've sold their house, a lot of them are cash buyers, and they don't meet the definition of who an affordable buyer is. So everybody looks to buy out of their affordability requirement.
The trouble is that doesn't, that doesn't help us hit our number.
No, it doesn't.
Yeah, I suppose that could happen.
Yeah.
Someone's been in the house for a long time, make some money. We'll have to think about how that works. Do you have anything else?
Yeah, a couple of things, I think. Yep, yeah, so, so that, that kind of feeds in, I, I know we talked about a, a few of these and actually kind of answered a question, so I, I think we're talking about density, and again, trying to pursue some other initiatives, but if we're just doing senior housing, you know, I think that answers a little bit of my question of where we want to go on density. But one of the provisions there that I did like, you know, pulling from Grafton's TOD zoning, what they did is they did a max for special permits, so there's a certain number of units that's allowed by right, and then a second number that's allowed by special permit, and then anything above that would require a variance. So, you know, kind of min-maxing it in that way, I think is a, is a good way of doing that. What I would be proposing here, obviously for discussion with the board, but leaving the base density for the existing districts as they are, but do we want to consider, with the overlay, do we want to consider additional density and, you know, as we go to target that? You know, currently the base zoning is one unit per ten thousand square feet, so I don't know if we want to consider higher unit per acre by right or by special permit, but we can kind of, I think from our discussion tonight, I can kind of re- revisit that and probably dial that in a little bit more for the board.
My only concern about, just getting back to the, the PRD is you're gonna have the MBTA communities zoning on the warrant. And I want to see that pass, I'm concerned, just when you designate the areas of, for the MBTA communities, if you put too much on the boards about multifamily, you, you may end up with a goose egg. So I think that if you keep the MBTA communities and you do the C, everybody knows it's over fifty-fives, a lot of people who live in town have parents who live in the over fifty-fives. A lot of town meeting member lives in over fifty-five. I just don't want to see us get a goose egg on some of the zoning bylaws, because everybody's complaining about multifamily housing for a variety of reasons.
Yeah, these, these would be separate, and certainly if we, if we pursue just the senior housing, none of this would be eligible for MBTA anyway, so it would be fully separate.
Yeah.
To that point.
We don't have that many acres available now, do we, for?
There's a few, there's a few.
They're not wetlands?
That aren't wetlands. No, actually, I, I agree with that list, huh? Sorry, make a note. This, this is not a real lot, this is not a, this is not a real.
Could you pull like a, how many acres, hundred acres?
Hundred?
Fifty acres?
I don't think so. Well, we, one in sixty-one A, I don't know how big that is, it might be, but my alley's like forty maybe? But, no, no, I don't, I don't, top of my head, I think the only, probably the town's the only one who has acreage that big. There's a couple of industrial things down by, down towards Grafton, but no, the residential is nothing like that, I don't think. I'll get you, I'll get you a list, because I had one from work in my other life.
The foundation.
Next, yeah, down the, down the hall, yeah, yeah, if we could ever get that to seriously, someday they will. Yeah, that's probably, well, yeah, because.
You want to assure that all your zoning articles go down in flames, designate the foundation as the MBTA community site.
You kidding? I don't think I, I, I'm not ready to do that, but, no. I, I think to your point, if there, if there was that kind of land around, a lot of it, you'd probably see more fifty-five and overs. This is still a demand for it.
Yeah.
Sure.
All you need is five acres.
Yeah.
Out of the statute.
Sometimes fifteen, twenty. But anyways, I, I, I'll get, I'll get the list.
So then the other one, last one that we had, and I, I think I still need to coordinate a little bit with DPW to get some language refined, but looking at dead-end road provisions, there was some language in there, and even the language that I provided was a little bit draft. You know, I kind of struggle with that myself, of, of what the best path forward, of defining dead-end road and, and how best to regulate those, but you know, that's something that we'll want to look at in terms of, you know, length of dead-end roads that'll be allowable. Obviously, there's the kind of public safety component in, in relation to that, that we want to consider, you know, turn around to the, of the vehicles, you know, how do we want to handle that? And frankly, how do we want to define it, because there's, you know, when you get into dead-end road definitions, it, it gets, it's challenging with some of the engineering of, you know, what they call lollipop roads and, and some of that stuff, so I'm just making sure that we're kind of envisioning all of those and pulling best practices, we do have a lot of provisions from other communities that we'll be evaluating, but even those, I, you know, won't say are bulletproof.
There was a comment about Hammerhead.
Yeah, 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 so, yeah, trying to provide the T-turnaround or the Hammerhead turnaround, or cul-de-sacs. You know, do we provide, you know, an easement for future extension and make sure, you know, as we think of future planning, for these to be extended in the future, to connect to other roadways, you know, those would be some of the provisions that we'll want to think about.
Anybody else? So we're going to focus on senior, not the planned, so that's going to tighten the focus up.
Yeah.
I think it makes sense to get the MBTA communities done, I think if you add the, you're right about giving people other options, but with the PRD, they're gonna think, the town media's gonna think we're nuts. Well, they just think, you know, everybody thinks there's too many apartments in town already.
Yep.
Not me necessarily, but.
Right, I mean, the, yeah, this, this is intended to be fully separate from the MBTA, and so you're right, you know, making sure that that's not a, a conclusion that's drawn, I think. We can narrow the scope and maybe revisit PRDs at a, at another time.
Okay.
We can look at the density.
And you saw that.
Maybe the types of buildings in there too.
Uh, you know, you saw that ruling, I didn't read the decision by Judge Wren about Holden, that it's not mandatory?
Of the MBTA?
Yeah.
Yeah. I still have to unpack that, I mean, I, it's still the, you know, the.
I think we should adopt it.
Right, yeah.
We should move it forward, but, you know, I, I don't want people, I don't want town meeting, you know, saying, well, Holden did it, why do we have to do it?
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll be continuously evaluating the, the risks towards.
Yeah.
The benefits of such, so.
Didn't you say they keep adding, the state keeps adding things you won't qualify for if you don't?
Yeah, I, I've always had the, the grant list of, in terms of the, you know, for lack of a better word, for the, the sticks in, in terms of carrots that seems to grow as, as communities kind of wrestle with it and, and question if it's mandatory or not, so, yeah, I'm, I'm a little bit conscious that there may be some unforeseen consequences that we want to try to see beforehand, so I, you know, we're, we're evaluating those, and I, I similarly think, you know, my personal opinion is that the, the risks would, would outweigh the benefits at this point for, for Shrewsbury in our context. And I, I do think that there's opportunity that passing the zoning can address some of the needs that we are seeing from our planning process, but.
Anybody else? This isn't going to be ready next week, so if anybody has any thoughts, if anyone has them on to Mr. McGorrick?
Just maybe we could break out the use table, you know, as a separate document.
Yep.
Maybe a little cleaner.
Yeah, what I'll do is, and, and from the feedback tonight, I'll be able to kind of pare some of those comments down and, and have a cleaner document for us to review for January.
Great.
It's just easier to start from looking at something.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Sitting and conceptualizing it and.
No question.
Absolutely.
Okay. Next order of business is to approve the twenty twenty-four planning board calendar. Anybody have any comments or questions about that?
Other than I won't be here in, uh, in March.
At the March meeting?
Yeah.
The July meeting is going to be the second Thursday because of July fifth, right?
Yeah, that makes sense.
Okay, I have no problem with that.
Is far out?
Yep.
I didn't know I'm doing tomorrow.
I was just gonna say, I, I'm not.
Next November.
For being on a planning board, I'm not a good planner of my own life, so.
Okay, so do you want to adopt this as is?
Yeah.
We know far enough advanced that we have to move a meeting, it's not going to screw up the advertisement, it's not, you can do it.
Yeah.
I move that we adopt as our schedule, the dates and the related filing dates is reflected on the document that Chris provided us entitled planning board regular meeting schedule.
Second.
Second, okay, motion second, ayes in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, so voted. Okay, next order of business is to view and have possible discussion on the MBTA community zoning, Ms. McGorrick?
Yeah, so a little bit of a brief update for this meeting, we've been conducting a, a number of outreach, we did our public forum where we did, you know, some activities, kind of looking at that discussion of density and design, and presented some of the, the background on MBTA. We also did some online engagement strategies where we similarly met with some members of the public and, and kind of discussed the zoning in more detail and got some feedback, so what we'll be doing is we'll be coalescing that now and running through our planning process to better refine a proposal. We'll likely be having language developed early to mid-January, at least in draft form. Once we have that, we'll do another public outreach meeting where we'll be kind of meeting with the public in a more, you know, less formal setting, looking to get feedback on that draft proposal, hopefully being able to refine it there and be before the board for public hearings in February at that meeting, so. You know, we'll certainly keep you abreast of that, and we'll send that draft language when we have it for your guys' input and consideration. But yeah, February target for the, for the public, public hearing section of that and placement on May town meeting, so. We do have a survey out, so that's available on our town webpage, anyone who's watching, please go there and, and please, you know, engage with that survey, that'll help us again, you know, we're still monitoring that as we develop the language, so any input that we can get along this way is, is going to be helpful for us to, to really gear it towards what we want to see.
How long are you going to keep that open for?
I anticipate we'll probably keep that open until the January public outreach session. We may have a follow-up survey related to that and the more refined language where we'll change what we're doing then. Certainly, once we have the refined language, it, it starts to be less, less, I don't want to say less relevant, but less, you know, we need to hear more about input on that language than the more higher conceptual kind of ideas for the zoning, so, yeah, I just, I would encourage the public to, to go to the website, go to our webpage, we have all the information there and, and really dig into that as soon as possible, because we, we do want to create that partnership through the process of developing it, so.
Sure.
I haven't gone to any of the meetings, but have any landowners come forward and say designate my site as MBTA?
We have not been that fortunate, I think, you know, but I think it has been helpful, we've, you know, in meeting with members of the public, I think we've really been able to kind of discuss areas that might be conducive towards this type of zoning, areas that we may want to avoid, and so I think that'll help us to refine, refine the scope and kind of look at those areas.
So far, what is the poll leader consensus indicate, period?
Yeah, so I think there's certainly, you know, looking, I, I think there's a leaning towards looking at multiple sites rather than one, you know, large site to meet all of the zoning, and really kind of spreading it out. There is some emphasis on looking at, you know, the existing density, whether it's, you know, existing apartments that we have in town or apartment districts and other multi fam, existing multifamily structures that may be conducive to this type of zoning, it would allow them for redevelopment and, and higher zoning, and it would streamline that process, but it helps us to build on where that infrastructure is, so there's been a lot of kind of leaning towards that. Certainly, obviously, avoiding any of the larger conservation areas or spaces that are, you know, environmentally sensitive. You know, that, that's been heard loud and clear, and man, I'm not surprised by that sentiment, but, yeah, so I think those are the, the main things we're looking at, so.
But the, the session that I, I, it wasn't well-attended, but after people understood that, you know, the state was telling us, we had to do it, and it actually was, I thought that was a pretty productive meeting. People really get, got in, really started thinking about it.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I actually, I think, I wasn't sure how it was going to work out, we did that density exercise, and we did that as well with a, a number of staff to kind of test it before we went to the public session, and I think one of the interesting takeaways for me from that is as we kind of looked at density and how to fit development, developments like this on a site, some of the common sentiments was, oh, that, that's not as dense as I thought it was requiring, and, and, you know, so I, I think that's, that's good to know that, you know, we are really through this pursuing middle housing, it's not the, necessarily the, the high-density apartments that a lot of people, I think, have an impression that this zoning is pressing. Not that that may preclude some of that development, that's something that we're going to be looking at, is, is how do we gear density that's going to fit open space development, and where are the sites where that might be conducive, where are the sites that it's not, so.
And then you, you found out that adults really never out, outgrow using Legos.
Yeah, we used Legos, it was actually kind of fun, so.
It's like, it was like a nice break, I thought, it worked, it worked.
So, so existing multifamily housing can be part of this MBTA communities?
Yeah, so one of the things that we're looking at, so the, the zoning works with the gross density of a site, and it's more complicated, but in, in a general sense, it assumes bare land for what the density is, so when we say zoning the site for fifteen units per acre, if there's, you know, ten units there, you zone it for fifteen units, you still get the fifteen units. if there's, you know, ten units there, you zone it for fifteen units, you still get the fifteen units per acre. It's not, you know, it assumes there's no development there. It does work backwards. So if you have thirty units an acre there and you zone it for fifteen, you only get the fifteen units per acre. So, um, it, it really just assume, it's looking at what is the zoning allowing to be built and doesn't consider the existing development, so.
Anything else?
Okay.
Sure we're gonna hear more about this over the next couple of months? Okay, um, I guess this agenda is yours, so, um, the zoning articles.
Um, so, uh, we put these on the, uh, agenda more as just kinda indicators. Um, these, I'll probably have language, um, for the January meeting, um, but I just wanted to put these to the board, just so you know, um, kinda what we're looking at and what's, uh, what's coming, uh, in terms of other zoning articles that we're looking at. Um, so the first one, uh, obviously, so the, the senior housing and the MBTA are two that we're proposing. Um, but, um, these other three, so digital signage, looking at, um, regulations. We currently allow digital signage, um, by special permit in, uh, the Town Center District. Um, so this would be looking at digital signage, um, throughout the rest of the community and how do we regulate that? Um, so I'll have some language in terms of that, um, for the board to consider. Um, the other one is the farmer's market definition. Um, so just looking at farmer's market, we found that it's, you know, our definition may be a little bit, um, too restrictive in terms of, um, what it's allowing and, and there's, um, some ability to build some flexibility in there for, um, not just the, the produce, um, farmer's market, but also, um, craft merchants and, and craft wares. So currently, we only allow it, it was either twelve or sixteen percent, um, to be that amount. And so we find that that kind of limits what we're able to, um, provide at the farmer's markets. So we'll be looking at that definition and, and also just generally farmer's markets and how we're regulating those. Um, and then, um, a fun one, shed setbacks. So.
Shed setback?
Shed setbacks, so we're finally tackling that one. So it is a, a frequent, uh, kind of.
Would help Patty out.
In the building department, uh, frequent thorn in Patty's side, if, uh, if I can say so. Uh, that, yeah, in terms of setbacks, um, sheds placed, um, close to property boundaries, um.
Or nor existing.
Uh, so this would be for, for, um, all sheds and, um, obviously, anything that's there may fall under grandfathering.
Yeah.
Um, but this is really just looking to, you know, currently, we, um, sheds are required to meet, um, the regular setbacks, um, for, uh, primary structures, which we find, you know, most people wanna put them a little bit closer to the, to the fence than, you know, uh, ten, twenty, forty feet away from, from the fence. Um, we're looking at, um, what other communities are doing in terms of regulating their sheds and how do we wanna, um, fit that? I do know building code requires it to be five feet off of the pri- uh, off of the property boundary, so that would be a minimum at least.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a hot button issue.
Right. It's, it's in our, in our zoning as written and we wanna just provide the flexibility. Um, one of the, you know, I think it was Worcester, I think, has, uh, provision for agricultural structure that kind of broadens that a little bit more than just sheds into pergolas and things like that. So, um, just, you know, allowing people to use their backyards a little bit more flexibly than, um, they may know that they're not allowed to, so.
How about potentially, uh, expanding the allowed uses, allowed as a right within the limited business, commercial business?
We actually.
Industrial.
We actually talked about that this week.
Yeah, cause.
Yeah, it's making it hard.
Yeah, we can look at that.
We're gonna, well, I don't know if that's a lot. I think, um, the senior housing and the MBTA thing is gonna take up a lot of time at the annual. You know, for a while, we were, um, we were holding a lot of the zoning till the fall, um, just so you don't have sixty articles on, um, and people start losing.
Delay some of that to the fall.
What?
We could delay some of that to the fall.
Well, it, it depends.
We should start talking about it.
Depends when it, yeah. Uh, because you don't, well, when we get to the point of knowing what town manager's office is gonna have, we're not saying we should, we should do that with all of those, but I think if it starts to get, something's gonna take a lot of time. Cause those two, those two are gonna have to take a lot of, I'd be surprised if they don't take a lot of time at town meeting.
Yeah, I, I think, and that's why we kinda separated those out, um, a little bit. I think the other three, I, I'm not trying to diminish those in any way, but I think those are probably a little bit more straightforward than some of the other zoning that we're looking at, so, um. Yep.
Okay, good. How's that? Anything else?
I'm good.
Nope. Okay, old business. We, we don't even have anything on old business, do we?
No.
Nope. Okay, correspondence, I didn't see any.
I move that we conclude this evening's public hearings.
Second.
I'm listening in a second. You wanna also adjourn the meeting?
That's kind of same thing. Is that the way you did the Sullivan's meeting?
Yeah, we, yeah, we adjourned the meeting.
I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
Second, different cultures, I guess. Um, okay, all is in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, post, the vote in. Okay.
Thank you.
We'll see.